This is the special meeting of the Marlington Board of Education on December 19th at 5:00 PM. Roll call please.
Josh Hagan.
Here.
Karen Humphries.
Here.
Kathy Krebko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Here.
Thank you. Adoption of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda?
Just an exec session.
Is there a motion to adj...
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Mr. Swift.
Yes.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
Ms. Humphries.
Yes.
Ms. Krebko.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Is there a motion for the Marlington Local School District Board of Education to recess into executive session pursuant to revise Code 121.22 G5 for the following purpose: Preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of employment.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. Call the roll please.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
Mr. Swift.
Yes.
Ms. Humphries.
Yes.
Ms. Krebko.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Time in is 5:07.
Are we ready?
Okay.
It didn't show.
We'll declare us back in at 5:36 or out, I should say, of executive session 536. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Call the rule, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Thank you, we're adjourned.
Welcome to the Marlington Local School District Board of Education meeting of Thursday, December 19th, 6:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Josh Hagan.
Here.
Karen Humphries.
Here.
Kathy Krepko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Here. Thank you. Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Swift.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge, and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Um, check one thing, please. There's one change to the agenda. Under Old Business, item number two, it was not switched from last month, so it would be a recommend, the motion to approve, not the recommend the board to review. That was not changed.
What's that again?
It says recommend, it was not changed from last month's, when it was new business, it was recommend the board to review. The only change for this month be recommend the board, recommend the-
Approve.
The board to approve, and then you guys can decide from there. Apologize for that.
Oh.
Other than that, no, there's no changes.
So is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Let me get back on the right page. Okay, Josh, you motioned.
I seconded. Mark made the motion.
Okay.
Now I need to call roll on the amendment.
Right. Alright. So call the roll on the amended agenda, please.
Don't you have to call roll on the amendment, and then the agenda is amended after that?
Correct.
Okay. On the amendment.
You just said the amendment.
Thank you.
Amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is to change item B2, to revise it from saying, review, to saying approve.
Right.
Correct.
That's under Old Business. Okay. Ready for roll call then?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay. And then is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Okay, we're moving on to our student presentation, so happy holidays, merry Christmas, and we're going to bring up our Students of the Month right now. So this is the fun part of the evening. So we're going to start with Mr. Farrell from the high school to bring up to discuss our Elk Students of the Month. Good evening. I have the privilege of introducing two of our high school students as Elk's Teens of the Month. When I call your name, please come up and stand while I read a short biography about you, and get a picture with myself and Mrs. Humphries. First up is Reese Marvin. Come on up, Reese.
Reese is the daughter of Josh and Angie Marvin. She is vice president of Student Council, an executive member of Character Counts Club, member of TRIAM Music Honor Society, Drama Dukes, Sources of Strength, and is a Duke Crew Director. She is a member of Duke Street Select Vocal Ensemble, the Marlington Corral, and is the Choir Council Historian. She is a member of the Varsity Sideline Cheerleading Squad and softball team as well. She's participated in the Alliance Marlington Softball League for eight years as a player and volunteer, and works at Heggie's Confectionery. In her free time, Reese enjoys singing, reading, musical theater, softball, and hanging out with friends. Following graduation, she plans to pursue a career in early childhood education. Reese's teachers say she is a pleasure to have in class. She's a fantastic student and exceptional leader in our building. She's often seen helping out around the building in various capacities, and she does not hesitate to take on many leadership roles, and always has a smile on her face, and a positive attitude while doing it. She's very deserving of this recognition. Congratulations, Reese. Thank you. Our next Elk Teen of the Month is Dylan DiDonato.[1693.71][1693.71](applause) Dylan is the son of Thomas and Christine DiDonato. He is a member of the National Honor Society, Character Counts Club, and Sources of Strength at Marlington High School. He's a captain on the varsity football team and a member of the ski club. Dylan is a member of St. Joseph Church in Maximo. In his free time, he enjoys playing football, snowboarding, going to the gym, and lifting weights. Following graduation, Dylan plans to pursue a business degree at the University of Mount Union. Dylan is a leader both in and out of the classroom. His work ethic in the classroom and athletics is second to none. In the classroom, he's highly organized and always has his assignments done completely neatly- neatly, and on time. He arrives early to class every day and is extremely polite and respectful. He always has a positive attitude and is enthusiastic about learning. Out of the classroom, Dylan's an exceptional role model for his peers. He is a leader in our school and on the athletic field and is extremely deserving of this award. And next up is middle school principal, Mr. Rizletti.
Good evening. We'd like to recognize our middle school Students of the Month. Our first Student of the Month could not make it tonight, but we'll read her paragraph anyway. Zoe Breckbile. Zoe is the daughter of Mackenzie and Wesley Breckbile. In her spare time, she enjoys playing volleyball and is a member of the eighth grade volleyball team. This is what her teachers have to say about her. Zoe is an outstanding student who exemplifies the qualities of a respectful, responsible leader. She arrives to class with a positive attitude and is always prepared and ready to learn. She sets an example of a middle school leader by participating in class and thoughtfully completing her work. Zoe's a very hard worker. She goes above and beyond when it comes to her academics. She also has a great personality, is respectful, and is very kind. Zoe's a quiet, yet personable young lady who excels in the classroom. She's a leader in the eighth grade, although she may not even realize how great she is. Her kindness and work ethic make her a great role model to her peers. We're very proud of Zoe Breckbile. Our next eighth grade Student of the Month is Tyler Walder. Tyler is the son of Jill and Dustin Walder. Outside of the classroom, he participates in football and baseball. He was a member of the league champion eighth grade Marlington Dukes football team this fall. The work ethic, talent, and creativity he displays makes him successful in any activity that he chooses. This is what his teachers have to say about him. Tyler's great at asking questions and being actively engaged in his education. He takes challenging courses for a middle school student, including high school level classes, and he excels in those classes because of his positive and grounded attitude. He's also respectful and kind to others. Tyler is just an all-around great kid. He's a leader, responsible, and a hard worker. He's a respectful, hard-working student who has that confident and mature presence about him, and this is what makes him stand out amongst his peers. We're so proud of what Tyler has already accomplished, and we know that his best is still to come. And next up, we have Lexington Elementary Principal, Mrs. Weber.
Good evening. Could I have Aubrey Williams up here, please? Aubrey Williams is the fifth grade Kiwanis Student of the Month at Lexington Elementary. I'm going to tell you a little bit about her. Aubrey's favorite subject in school is art because she loves to explore creativity. A little bit about her and her family. She has a dog named King, and the name of the dog is King because her dad thought he was going to be strong like a king. Something she hopes to do in the future, she'd like to live at the beach.
Me too.
One more thing about her, she plays softball, and tomorrow she will start her third season of softball. It is indoor softball. So why was Aubrey chosen for Kiwanis Student of the Month? Aubrey was chosen for Kiwanis Student of the Month because she goes above and beyond in her classes. She checks over her work before submitting it, and she asks for help when needed. She not only wants to do her best on all of her assignments, but she requests additional opportunities for practice as well. Aubrey also has a helper's heart and has worked with the students and staff at Lexington to accomplish various tasks, such as helping with assignments and assisting in the library during her recess time. Aubrey, your teachers love your determination to achieve your goals, both at school and in your extracurricular activities. We are proud of you for impacting the classroom at Lexington and our entire school in a positive way. Next up, Ms. Moore, Marlboro Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Marlboro Elementary's December Kiwanis Student of All right. A little bit about Kiana from her teachers. Kiana Holban is our December Kiwanis Student of the Month. Kiana has made tremendous choices regarding her education and on-task behaviors as she embarks on her fifth grade year. She sets a positive example for her peers, works hard in class, and makes adjustments where necessary. Kiana is a great example of the balance of work and play. She knows when to get serious and commit to her learning. Fabulous work, Kiana. We encourage you to continue doing great things. A little bit more about Kiana. Her favorite subject in school is math. Kiana cites that her enjoyment for math has a great to do with her excellent math teachers over the last few years. Kiana also likes doing random math quizzes at home when she is bored. Another fond memory regarding math is when her sister Kindree taught her math when she was in kindergarten. Some special things about Kiana's family. Kiana lives with her sister Kindree and her mom Amanda. She has a pet cat named Scaredy Cat. So Kiana loves visiting North Carolina on vacation for fun family events. She also loves shopping with her mom and her sister, and their favorite places to go are Macy's and Claire's. Kiana's future plans, she wants to be a cosmetologist and eventually own a salon. History is always very interesting to her, and she would like to visit the White House in Washington, DC. In Kiana's free time, she likes to watch YouTube videos and do crafts. She also enjoys playing the acoustic guitar, and this is something that her uncle taught her and will occasionally give her lessons. This is a fun hobby for her. Ultimately, Kiana's favorite hobby is crocheting. She especially likes making headbands and then giving them to her friends. Her friend Hayden told me that Kiana is talented at crocheting. She's very fast and efficient. She also said that she is a great friend, and they enjoy helping each other at school with math and reading. Lastly, Kiana is an honor roll student and a role model at Marlboro Elementary. Congratulations, Kiana Holban, Marlboro's Kiwanis Student of the Month for December. Next up, Mr. Spandio for Washington Elementary.
Okay. Washington is proud to have Lacy Davis as our Kiwanis Student of the Month. Lacy Davis is our Student of the Month. Her teachers wrote that she is an outstanding student who works very hard. She has incredible, she has incredible character, one that should be modeled by all students in her class. Lacy makes teaching fun for everybody, all staff that knows her. Her peers look up to her. She's a role model for all students, not only in her grade, but students younger as well. She is happy, bright, optimistic, and loves to learn. Lacy is also a tremendous athlete, and she can be found on the ball field during recess and her free time. We will greatly miss her next year. We are sure she will be very successful at the middle school and beyond. Her favorite subjects in school are reading, social studies, and gym. She likes to play games with her family, and she has one dog. In the future, Lacy would like to become a pro soccer player, and if she could visit anywhere, she would like to visit the Bahamas. She enjoys playing soccer. She is very talented in reading and writing. She is also an avid Ohio State Buckeyes fan, and me being a fan of the team up north, I've really enjoyed discussing the finer points of the game with her the last four years. It's been a good time. And she likes to make cookies with her mom, and I've sampled several dozen of them, and they are delicious.
Family, parents, grandparents, thank you for coming out tonight. We congratulate all our Students of the Month, so we're about to start the formal part of our meeting, so if you wish to exit now, you can, or you could stay for the formal part of the meeting. We've got about one minute.
Impressive group of young people, I tell you. I need to step up my game. Invite you to join me in prayer. Almighty God, we know that we are different in so many ways. We're all individuals with our own particular backgrounds and our own particular needs, and yet we recognize how much alike we are. Give us proper direction as we seek unity of purpose for our service and the proper education of our children. May those gathered here tonight be guided by your help and strength, and may they look forward to no reward other than the good feelings that come by helping others. We pray for our schools, that your spirit would undergird the administrators who teach and all others involved in the education process. May they impart not only academics, but patriotism, friendship, and a sense of morality. We affirm tonight that a better school, a better community, and a better America begins with us. Blessed now, those here present, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Do I have to stay?
You can leave. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Make them stay.
Okay, OSBA presentation, Mrs. Krepko.
There is not a whole lot to report on. We should be getting notices soon that OSBA memberships are due. The Lester Morrison Teacher Education Book Grant from the northeast region of the OSBA is coming due, and if we can remind any students interested in education and applying for that. Governor Dewine signed this month House Bill 432, and that includes changes regarding alternate credentialing pathways for career tech educators. That's it.
Thank you.
Did you like that?
He loved it.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to December. We've got about one day before our students embark onto a little holiday break, and they're pretty excited for that right now. This is my presentation for December. I'm going to talk just a little bit, mostly it's just reason to celebrate. December is a probably out of the ten months that we have students, you know, in the buildings, it's, December's probably one of the busiest when it comes to athletics and arts, and you name it. It's busy. The first thing I'm going to talk about is STEM Goes Red. Talk a little bit about our Buddy's Christmas Party, the Rotary Christmas Luncheon, and then our holiday concerts. All just happened within the last few weeks. The STEM Goes Red is, was, you might have saw it in the newspaper, so NeoMed had with the, had a STEM Goes Red Day in collaboration with the American Heart Association, and they had eighth grade girls from anywhere in northeast Ohio that wanted to attend and sign up. So we had, Mike, how many girls went?
Seven.
Seven. So we had seven girls go and explore STEM careers and then got some hands-on experiences there, talking about science, technology, engineering, and medicine, and all those were led by women. So this was only a conference for that, and as far as I know, they had just an amazing time. It was a good day. There was, I don't know, three or 400 girls from around northeast Ohio that attended They enjoyed that. Just last week, we had our Buddy's Christmas Party, so here in the DLZ, so we had with our MD unit and our cross category units from the elementary to, at Lexington, over then to the middle school group, and our high school group came, and it's in collaboration with our Character Counts group. So they kind of buddied up with our Character Counts, and they did games, had lunch. It's really just building relationships. So Duke, Duke the Dog was there, the Grinch was there. The kids just really had a very nice time playing little games and doing that and having a chance to visit the high school, so that was nice. We also, every year, the Rotary, the Alliance Rotary offers a Christmas lunch at the Elks for, I think we had, Mrs. Weber, how many elementary kids did we take? Thirty-five. So I think we would have had thirty-five, and Alliance City Schools then would have had thirty-five. So between, not just Lexington, between Lexington, Marlboro, and Washington, and there's a lot of forethought that goes into this. So the elementary principals get together and kind of figure out which students, you know, kind of have a need and that aspect of it, and at the same time, they do get a gift. So they kind of, the Rotary goes out and kind of, this is very intentional about the gifts they shop for these kids. So Santa Claus does come, they eat lunch, we serve them lunch and do that, then the kids go up and visit with Santa and they get a gift. So it's a very nice hour, hour and a half, where the kids get to do something a little different. So it's nice. Rotary's been doing that every year, so I thank them for that. So it was good. Our holiday concerts, so we had, you know, middle school choir, Marlboro's concert, Lexington, Washington, high school band, high school choir, probably missing some in there somewhere. I think I made most of them except for one, happened to be out of town. The kids just did amazing. I can't say enough about our staff that teaches those kids and the time it put in, and then, you know, the time they put on stage. I think everything was held here at the high school, so it made it a little bit nicer to have a little bit larger stage, a little bit more comfortable seating. So it worked out well. So there's some, some of the elementary, so each one might be a little bit uniquely different, and some pictures from our holiday concerts that were taken either from the, you know, from the high school side of it, but the choir and band did a good job. Actually, I don't know why I didn't, we had some band ones that didn't put them in there, but they did an amazing job. So I mean, it's just an extremely busy few weeks with Thanksgiving being so late, everything got pushed into December quick. So it was busy. Really just Merry Christmas. I mean, but now we're going to talk a little bit about tonight and new business, but I mean, we're at the end of the year here. Get ready and go into January and go from there. So it's a pretty short report for me this week, or this month.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Sure. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Good. I'm going to shut this. Take out your favorite board member. Take out your favorite board member.
That's what it's for?
Yeah.
We'll coordinate later. We'll argue.
All right, Bob, you're up.
Okay. Wait, public participation. Wait, is, didn't, did anyone sign up for public participation?
No.
No sign, okay. Okay, old business.
Okay, old business. We had two items from last month that were moved into old business.
Okay. Wait, public participation. Wait, is, did anyone sign up for public participation?
No.
No sign. Okay. Okay, old business.
Okay, old business. We had two items from last month that were moved into old business. So the first item is I recommend the board to approve the 2025-2026 Marlinson Local School Calendar as shown.
Second.
Second. I need to change that on the agenda. It's MSLD.
Marlinson Local School.
It should be MLSD.
I almost said that. I was trying to figure out the...
Yeah. MLSD, yes, okay. And Mark seconded. Okay. In discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Final one in old business was just policies that were put in last month, gave you time that month of review. And if you had any questions, I asked everybody to reach out to me last month. I recommend the board to review the following resolutions.
Approve. We changed.
Oh, sorry, you're right. I recommend the board to approve the following resolutions from volume 43, number one, October 2024.
So moved. Second.
Jonathan and Josh, okay. Discussion?
I'd like to know if we could pull out one of these policies and vote on it separately?
Absolutely. Which policy?
0155.
Okay, so...
That was the one in regards to May and shall.
So we're going to vote separate on policy 0155.
And the reasoning behind that is I think we should go back to appointing the committees versus the representatives for transparency.
Fair enough.
Okay. So let's do the vote on the, all the others first.
We're gonna vote on all policies with the exception of policy number 0155.
Right.
Correct?
Okay.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we would recommend the board to approve the following policy 0155 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion?
What's the...
Can you read the policy?
You have a problem with the, you said transparent. It's not transparent.
This, in particular, changes the wording from, was it May or shall to May?
I'll read.
As far as the appointing of committee members?
Yes. All we're doing, the change in, the change is a technical correction in two spots to, instead of shall, changes to may. That would be, that was my, that was my recommendation. After speaking with Neola, said it was, I could, it was either way, it was fine, both of which are good. It was my call to make the recommendation, which I said last month I did.
Yeah.
And I actually did, heard from none of, none of the five board members reached out to me in the last 30 days about this policy, so I left it on where it was at. And I have no problem with it voting separately. I understand your reason. Thank you.
And so, to be clear, Neola, our Neola representative says that there's no difference. It makes no difference.
Correct. There's no difference between May or shall. I've also spoken to two different attorneys, and they also say there's, there's nothing we're doing wrong or illegal. And we are, we're either way in our ship.
Well, no, the question legal-wise, May and shall. Shall is used in saying that you must or you have to.
The attorneys completely disagree with you.
Oh, I guess. They know better than me.
So that wouldn't be you. That would be our previous board president, Carolyn Gabrick, and the person that writes, because that's what I was told as questioning this policy.
This is Neola, not Mary Jo, correct?
Correct.
This is Neola.
But he did check with two other attorneys.
I did.
Who said it's the same, had the same.
It's not illegal. It does not matter. It's not illegal.
So they said May has the same legal definition as shall?
We didn't talk about the legal definition. We talked about the policy.
Oh, no, that's not what I was saying. I was saying the legal definition of the words is completely different, and that is my objection.
I don't care. I mean, I'm looking at the, I consider, I just need to know, are we following the policy? And if I change the policy to May, does it affect the way the policy operates? And they said no.
And those attorneys that you spoke to had no qualms with the use of representatives versus committees?
No, actually, they said that's probably the biggest thing that they will be presenting to the states. The boards are going mostly to board representatives due to the continuous ridiculous litigation coming from outside sources on having committees at all. So...
Well, at Capitol Conference, I actually raised the question to the OSBA attorneys, and I asked them about replacing committees with representatives, and their, their response was it would be a good idea if you'd want to be sued. So that was something that, you know, seems like it could be a problem to me.
Well, then I guess we'll wait and see if it becomes a problem.
They were worried about getting sued because we don't have the committees?
No, they, they explained that having representatives and lieu of committees, it creates an appearance of eliminating transparency.
But everything that happens has to be voted on in a meeting. Nothing takes place.
So from a, I can just address from a transparency standpoint why I made the decision and recommendation. I'm okay with how anybody votes. I get that. So May makes more sense for me. At the end of the day, from a transparency standpoint, when we do things, we do things at a work session as a group. Okay? We're not individualizing a committee. Live or not live, we're not individualizing and then having to repeat it again.
Well, I mean, just for example, though, Jonathan is the policy representative, and at last meeting, you stated that he was not even aware of the review of the first reading of these policies. So...
At the present time, Jonathan is not available for the time that Mr. Holland met with me and reviewed the policies. And typically, a committee is a board-driven committee. It's not, you know, so it's really a board decision. It's not my decision or even my recommendation as you, if you read policy. Based on that, it's, it's the board's decision to have committees or not. If you don't have committees, then what you're doing is basically, it's, you're just having, you know, your superintendent's basically gonna hold work sessions for you to do that. And then obviously, you have questions in between. That's fine.
And then we discuss it in the meeting.
Me, I am much more comfortable being transparent with a full board in an open session, or if we have to go exec session, then I am having six committee meetings and then having to repeat that again. I guess I don't understand from a transparency point. I do disagree with you, because we are very open here, you know, specifically me when we hold our meetings.
And I'll second what Dan's saying, because the years that most of us have been on these committees, it's just like you're saying. We might spend an hour, two hours in a committee meeting, and the two board members are there. You can't do anything. You're just more, you might be more formed, but then you gotta come back and explain it all again to the rest of the board. So it's, it's a function of saving time and being more efficient. You're not, you're not being less transparent about it. It's, it's about being a little bit more efficient on how we operate.
There is inherently less transparency, just as, Karen, you're the curriculum representative. Just as we had the meeting where we approved the curriculum, and you stated that you hadn't reviewed it. Like I said, if we would have had a committee, they would have reviewed the curriculum and opened for the public to see and know more about the actual...
It was still open for the public to see before...
I'm just saying it makes it more transparent and more available. That's just where I'm coming from.
I don't think it's any different than...
People use this word transparency as a BS excuse.
I don't think so.
To attack the board, because we've done everything transparent.
Yeah.
We put everything online. Bob has everything available. Somebody can walk in there tomorrow. We get 200, you know, public records requests that keep Bob busy. We should probably hire a full-time person to do that. But the honest-to-God truth is there's no transparency in that issue to be dealt with. You have people who represent the board in these areas. You've done a great job on buildings and grounds. You talked to Dan alone. Dan and I talked. Dan and I talk about Neola. You know, I talked to Ed at Neola. I have read the revision here. I don't think that there's an issue. I've listened to Ed from Neola, and I think that when we talk about transparency, that's a political term that people use to create division.
Okay.
And I think that that's what you're doing here.
Okay. You're welcome to believe that.
Well, it's no different than me picking up the phone and calling Dan about some, some topic unrelated to any committee I'm on. How's that, how's that any different? You know, you're talking to Dan, I'm talking, we're all talking to Dan individually at one, at some point or another. And it's, like Jonathan said, the transparency issue is just a political term.
Guess what? It's an election year next year, folks. So we're gonna have this issue. Come up, transparency, transparency, transparency. Come on in. Come to the board. See how many people. Ben, could you show everybody how many people are at the board meeting tonight?
Your hands are shaking. Why are you getting so defensive?
Yeah, 'cause I'm a little annoyed with this issue, because transparency is a political ploy that people empower, that people that are not in power use to put down public servants that do their job.
That's the only time it's used.
And I think that that's what you're talking about.
No, I want more transparency.
I think that we have a lot of transparency here at Marlin. I think that what you're doing, and what Carolyn Gabrick and CFR is doing, is ridiculous, and it's trying to divide our community further and further, because they can't stand to see the successes that we have achieved.
You mean like, you mean like...
Over the last several years at Marlin.
Okay. You mean like printing full-page ads in the newspaper with the Titanic?
Josh, that was six years ago.
Yeah, I mean, oh my...
You're just, you're claiming, you're claiming someone is being divisive.
You've voted with us a majority of the time.
Gentlemen.
So are you not being transparent, Josh?
I'm gonna put us back on topic that we have one, we have a first and a second on the floor for this one policy. I feel that this, the nice thing about this democracy is everybody has a right to vote how they want, and that's why we're gonna do it. So let's just go ahead and move forward with the vote if you can, please.
Yes, call the roll, please.
There you go.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes. We're not, we're not voting for the change. We're voting for it as it's decided, correct?
Yeah, just the single policy.
Then yes.
Yeah. Policy 0155.
Yeah.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay. Well, moving on, we got new business. I have three things in, well, I have one item in new business, two other items open for discussion amongst the board here tonight. The first one is a certified contract.
Is there a motion to recommend, to approve the certified contract as negotiated with the Marlinson Educators Association for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
I apologize.
Can you give general details?
Yes. Thank you. No.
No.
I can give details. Yeah. So I had a chance to, Bob and I had a chance to negotiate with the Marlinson Educators Association Board. We came to a tentative agreement. I know that then they took it back to their group, and they voted on that this past week, and unanimously approved the tentative agreement, which then goes to the board. I did meet with you guys and discuss, so just in general, we really just stuck to, we stayed away from language. We stuck to the salaries with the base. And so I'm going to, it was basically, they would get two and a half percent on the base the first year, two and a half percent on the base the second, second year, with one percent with their salary one time pay, and then three percent on the third year. Other than that, there was some stipend language and some other things, but that's it.
That's awesome, that it was unanimously approved also. I said that...
No, we got a, we got a, we got a great staff, and I appreciate that they know where we're at financially, and we, and this is something that we can't afford to give them currently, based on our five-year forecast, so...
Appreciate that. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
All right. Paving. So this is just a discussion. Obviously, if you want, if you feel we can make, you know, after Bob and I give you a brief update, you know, the recommendation from the board was to go ahead and finish the high school roof. So we did, you guys did approve that for roughly $2.6 million last meeting. One of the things I gave, I put you guys in my update was to say I wanted to kind of look at some, I wanted the lighting for purposes of the district. So, you know, a lot of compliments on you guys approving the middle school and the soccer light. It just looks more professional on our teachers and people who are out there. Our high school parking lot is still dark. So there's kind of a two-phase here. So if I jump around, I apologize. Okay? So you'll look in there, and I shared it with you in an update about a week ago, was one is lighting for the high school, and what that would be. And that was a cost of around $77,000 to finish off lighting at the high school. So basically, put some more poles in, so it's not so dark out back when you're doing that, and that.
Would those be on, like, what hours?
We set the hours as we want. So like they change, the current middle schools is changed based on, because it's getting dark earlier or lighter later, and then we can adjust that as we start in, as the light, I think, first day of winter's coming up, and then it gets lighter from there. So we can do that. So we do have that ability to adjust that very easily, which we currently do right now. The other piece was if they're gonna put those in, they're gonna be kind of, they have to dig underneath, you know, even with their underground, you know, they do a little bit of digging, as you can see around there. You know, I gave, I asked Bob, could we afford just to finish the high school? We did the phase one. You guys approved, which is all around the high school. Could we afford the next two phases of that with the lighting? And then obviously, the middle school, if you see the walking track, that's what I call it. It's basically the, that wraps all the way around. Our students use it for gym class. We have a lot of community members that use it in the summer and walk it. I'm not sure how far it is. It's pretty close to 400 meters, I think, if you did one. So it's not quite. I think four laps would be a mile, but I think it's pretty close.
Yeah.
So there's a couple different individualized quotes on that. One is the, obviously, with the middle school, I think that's $111,000 to do that. But that's actually switching from asphalt to concrete. They feel that's a better option in the long run and more forever option. And then obviously, the second one is for the paving purposes, you know, for that.
For the high school.
For the high school. So, and we're looking at areas B and C. So it's like a total of about, what, $196,000? Somewhere in there.
Yes, almost $197,000.
Yeah. You know, when Bob and I talked, we kind of looked at it as, you know, we typically have a work session in the spring to talk about all the significant items that we've done. So this will be year, I'm losing track of my years here, three or four, four maybe, that were really targeted. I said we're pretty close. I said, and when I got hired, it's probably five years what I was looking at. So we're really close here. So when I took a good look at our elementaries right now, I mean, we still have our normal summer maintenance, but there's nothing that I can think of that would say is a priority need that isn't something right now that we have to do currently. I mean, nothing's a currently, but everything's paved, it's air, the roofs are in, the basements are dry. We're in good shape. All right? There is some playgrounds and some things I want to, we want to attack on a paving side of it, but we could probably last one more year. So if I had to pick, because we're going at the lighting, and what we're digging up, I don't want to dig up and then re-dig up. You know, I don't want to have to then repatch it and do other things. That was the question. So I told Bob, can we do bits and pieces of it, or can we do it all? So Bob said that we can afford to do this, this piece, but that's really where we're gonna be basically drawing the line for the summer. You know, it can't be like, hey, we're gonna, like, I think Josh and I talked this week, Josh asked me the question about, are we looking at extending our abatement plan as a district on that? And I said... And I said, yes, but not this summer. Um, we currently have it set up, you know, doing all of Lexington, basically guaranteed we would, you know, we weren't shutting down any of our buildings. Right now, we're, everything's good, but we do need to continue to then start looking at it. We'll free up a ton of money when we're not dealing with the high school roof anymore, and we'll pretty much have most of the projects, paving projects will be caught up outside of smaller ones going in. So, yes, the answer's yes, but not this current summer. But that's okay. If you tell me different as a board, and you want, you want that to be a target of, in this, that's fine. I just was looking at it more substantially of our main use and the fact that the lighting's gonna be something I would, I thought for the price was fairly good to get that done, and on our way. But I'm open to whatever your guys' thoughts are at all. You know, it does not have to be approved tonight. Um, we can approve it, obviously, 'cause we know we, we can afford it, but, um-
So, it's just these two that you're, you're saying for this year, if we do this, this is, this is what we do?
Correct, for like, major projects. I'm not talking about our painting and our cleanings and things like that, and it, and it still gives us just, it's about as tight as we've ever ran from a PI 070 account-wise. But Bob says, you know, we still have enough cushion. If something would happen, if something significant would happen, we, we could, we'd be okay, but we just don't want that to happen.
Right.
You know, and I talked to Al extensively. I mean, I, we try to really take a really good look at the district as a whole, you know, and obviously, you can't predict, like, the gas line. We could have never predicted that that would have happened, you know, a year ago or two years ago. So, I can't sit here and say we're not going to have something come up, but I can't predict anything based on where our, where we currently are that would.
If we don't approve these tonight, does that jam you in any way?
It does not. Um, the only question I got from Al was, I think, the middle school one was, I think the, if we do it before January, the price stays good when it comes to concrete. When you switch to January, the concrete, for some reason, goes up. I feel like he said 16%. Could be wrong.
It does say it locks in the price when it's approved.
Yeah. Paving, I think the asphalt, we probably have some wiggle room there, I would be honest with you, but I knew that this, the one with the middle school was the one. And lighting, I think, uh, we're probably okay there if we didn't approve tonight either. I mean, that's time that you guys can think about it. And either way, I'm good. I just wanted to make sure, the best way to do is just to talk in a public session, but I didn't want to delay it to March, per se. And I got, and from Vasco's standpoint, they're very, the sooner you get something approved, the sooner they get on their books. They kind of-
Yeah.
And every, last couple of years, I've been a little late in March, not thinking, and it's put our books out late, so we're pushing into that. I always, that August deadline is kind of my, when everything kind of, at least over here, it's really busy.
It's going.
You know, when you get all the athletics go back into play, the, you know, the bands back in, they're coming off camp. I mean, it's just, I mean, we're busy all summer, but August 1st, it gets really busy.
Okay, so what's the thoughts?
I think whatever you guys recommend.
Bob, I know you did the money side. Any concerns, questions?
Do we need it and can we afford it? That's it.
Yeah, we can, thankfully, because of the pipeline money, essentially. I mean, with-
That big payment?
2.7 million for the roof, um, but with expecting over 2 million, or almost 2 million in the general, capital fund by way of the general fund for the back taxes.
Mm-hmm.
That makes the big difference where we can take on such project this year.
When will we receive that, do you know?
Um, I don't have anything firm. I can tell you what we were told, probably about eight weeks ago. Um, rough guess, when the county auditor told us this, um, was that he expected part to be by the end of the year, calendar year, but we're getting close to that already. And then, I think, we've heard February for the big, the big-
So, at least a million, a million of it, it'll be in February. He already has that check in hand. And the other ones coming in, Alan Harold actually said prior, it was right, it was probably a day of before the November meeting, he called and said, you know, for Marlinton, if you want me to send this check to you guys now, I can, but it didn't make any sense because he said it normally comes in February. But he said for us, he would send it. But it was already assumed, and we knew it was coming, so we didn't see the need to ask for it in advance. And, you know, obviously, our biggest expenditure is going to be that 2, 2.6 million dollar roof. So, one of the questions Bob and I raised to Tremco, um, and Team Craft was when they're gonna bill us for that. You know, it's, it's that timeline.
They, they said they could send us the payment earlier than February?
Yes, they could, he could have at the time.
Well, we should jump on that, shouldn't we?
No, it would have made no difference. Because it normally comes in February. I think he was thinking, in his original thought, he forgot that we, we take every pipeline money and immediately transfer it out. He assumed it could go right in to help our five-year forecast. And I said, it doesn't. And then he said, you're right, it makes no difference. Because whenever that money comes in, we immediately transfer it out, so it has zero effect on our five-year forecast. It'd be different if it was, you know, if it was, as it comes in, it goes into direct operations, but even, we immediately transfer it out. So, it didn't have any fiscal change on what we were demonstrating.
On, on our accounts that that money's held in, does, does that accrue any interest?
Uh, yeah, the monies we've received, yeah. Yeah, we, we would have invested that and had that in place that way.
Are you calling back and having send it?
We could.
Hey, a couple months' interest.
Well, we, that was our, that was our fear with Tremco was, you know, as you'll see tonight when Bob does budget revisions, you know, which we, we were very thankful that we reached out to Team Craft, with him and I called yesterday. Um, they won't bill the district until all materials come on-site, and then, actually, when they finish. So, you, we won't see a bill for this roof until mid-June. So, instead of having to, we were, you know, they can order, even though they're ordering materials now, they front all that money. So, it's not like we have to pull that money, a portion of it, and get a bill. We can continue to keep that, all the investments, all the way until, um, basically May meeting, and then we gotta start thinking about how to pull that out. So, that'll be a bonus for us on that end.
No, I think it's just a generous thing in the sense that they're, the county auditor's willing to modify their timing of their distribution to us if we had an urgent-
And that's what he said, modify. And I just, I didn't want him to make a special exception for Marlinton. At the end of the day, it's supposed to come February 1st is when those allocations come out, and I just, I just-
We're not in desperate need.
Well, I just didn't want to feel like we were doing a special favor, or the auditor was doing anything different than what should be done at the end of the day. There wasn't an emergency to say that this was something that the board needed to do that.
Wouldn't have hurt, but not a, not a really critical emergency.
So, going, so going back to this, you want to know right now who are willing to move forward on this now?
The only, well, the only thing that's going to make a difference as far as how much it costs is that-
Potentially, the middle schools, what Al said.
The middle school, that round, the track thing, because cement costs.
The other ones, no. I would be, if you guys wish to think about it and talk-
At first of the year, it changes?
The, the middle, the middle school concrete one, they said yes, would.
The lighting one says it's only good for 30 days too, so it could potentially change.
It could potentially change. I don't think it will. Um-
Yeah, but I mean, I think that's a consideration too, would just be to say, do you look at that as an urgent, fairly urgent thing in the sense that you want to get that project going, just, just to have the benefit of the lighting?
By no means. If you want to wait till January, uh, for our meeting, I will probably re-put those up for a recommendation, and then if it gives you guys some time to think about it. So, I don't want to feel like I put anybody in a spot to say, hey, I gotta make a decision or not.
I don't feel pressured, and I, I think it would make sense to vote on it tonight.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you feel that way too, Mark?
I'm willing to vote on it now.
Okay.
On, with a piece of it, or all three, or which?
All three.
Well, I say all three in the sense that I have a separate write-up, resolution for the middle school, and then one for the high school, and then one for the lighting. So-
So, we'll, yeah, we'll do it like that.
Okay, the lighting one's the only one that's a little different in the sense that, um, um, I'd like to wait till January 1st to execute that. So, I have some verbiage here that would just basically authorize Dan and myself to negotiate for that price that was in the quote.
What's, what's the timeline for them doing the lighting?
They'll do it this summer.
Do it over the summer.
Yeah, because what they're gonna do is trench. What they're gonna do is trench it. So, I, and I don't want them to, really, that's what pushed me to push the paving up, was when they do the trenching, they're gonna be digging through the asphalt, and the last thing I want to do would be to have them kind of just half-cover it, or we approve paving and then have them come in to light, and they dig up our brand-new.
Which almost happened with the gas.
Yes, which almost happened with the gas, correct. But they're lucky to be able to directional dig and go underneath it for that. So, I'm just trying to make the wear and tear, at least, because, I mean, this high school parking lot, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody was around, I get, I've been here 20 years, it was paved before I got here, so it's gotta be pushing close to 22, 23 years, maybe more. So, it's, it's held up well. I mean, um, you know, when we do things like this, that's the intent, is it's going to, you know, as long as we stay on top of general maintenance and patching it, you know, we're in good shape.
Okay, so for paving, can we, can we put the paving things together in one, or you want to have different?
So, what, because it was open to discussion, Bob has different resolutions ready because we were, it was open to discussion, so.
I had the one, I had the one for the lighting. Right. Do you want to do the, do you want to do that separately?
I just can do each one individually, if you want.
Okay.
We have to set up my minutes here, that'll be easier for me to vote.
Okay, so do you want to read the paving one?
Sure, I'll just provide the Cliff's Notes version, because some of us just legalese here. But the first, then, would be, let's see the order, we discussed it, would be the high school paving. I'd like to recommend approval of an agreement with Vasco Asphalt Company to provide paving services at the high school. The contractor provided a proposal for the project in the total amount of $196,938, which is based on pricing consistent with pricing provided by the contractor to the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Additionally, the superintendent and I request authority to enter into change orders on behalf of the board in a total amount not to exceed 10% of the contract sum. Change orders in excess of that amount will be brought to the board for its approval.
Good? Okay.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes. The next is for the paving at the middle school. I'd like to recommend approval of an agreement with Vasco Asphalt Company to provide paving services at the middle school. And this is for the walkway around it, this is paving, but it would be concrete. The contractor provided a proposal for the project in the total amount of $111,258, which is based on pricing consistent with pricing provided by the contractor to the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Additionally, the superintendent and I request authority to enter into change orders on behalf of the board in a total amount not to exceed 10% of the contract sum. Change orders in excess of that amount will be brought to the board for its approval.
Okay, motion?
Sumo.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
And you gave me the motion for the lighting.
Yes, you wanted to wait till January?
Oh, do you want-
Yeah.
Oh, this would be to authorize you and I to execute that contract-
Agreement.
In that agreement or negotiate for it, and we could do that.
I'm not on the treasurer's, no, I'm not on the treasurer's side. I have no idea. That's why I was asking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. So, there's a motion to authorize the superintendent and treasurer to negotiate and execute an agreement with a contractor in an amount not to exceed $77,020 for electrical work to install new LED poles and fixtures in the main lot and side lot of the high school. Further, the board authorizes the superintendent and treasurer to sign change orders related to the project in a total amount not to exceed 10% of the contract sum. Any change orders that exceed this amount will be brought to the board prior to the work being performed.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. That's all I have for new business tonight.
Thank you. Amen. Treasurer's agenda.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the following meetings. November 18th, 2024 work session, November 21st, 2024 regular meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the financial reports for the month of November 2024, as shown in the exhibits.
So moved?
Second. Okay, and comments?
Let me touch on the highlights?
Yes.
Okay. We finished the month of November with a total fund balance of $9,425,080, of which the general fund made up $7,508,558.12. Our capital projects fund finished the month of November with a balance of $139,127.70. And that's the one that, um, will, will be increased here as well too quickly. That sounds very low, but last board meeting, transfer of the first half of, um, pipeline monies is, it's in there now. So, that'll be larger next meeting. Permanent improvement finished the month with a balance of $497,972.79. Also provided is a list of the checks that were issued during the month of November totaling Also provided is a list of the checks that were issued during the month of November totaling And I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have on those at this time.
No questions? Okay, do you want to call the roll on this?
Okay. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend a motion to approve the following budget and revenue revisions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to provide a little bit explanation as well. See a couple of large numbers on there for the December revisions, both for revenue and for expenditures. General fund, see an increase in revenue of $225,000, or $255,735.52. That's basically reflecting the expectation of the change in the pipeline revenue and that lump sum that will be for back taxes that we should receive. And similarly, if you look on that same page in the '070 fund, you see that same amount also because we will receive that revenue. This is just the one side of the equation, this is just the revenue side. We'll receive that in the general fund, so the big number's there. Likewise, it's there for '070 capital projects fund when we transfer it. Permanent improvement also reflects a small increase there, $82,000 because of the increase in valuation that we expect that it will receive from that as well. Or, yeah, I think so. Actually, part of the settlement, back taxes will go there, that's probably more what that's for. And then if you look on the, the second page, which is the budget revisions, I have an increase of about 2.3 million in the general fund appropriation limit and 1.9 million in the '070 fund. And that's really to pay for these projects, like the roof and the paving.
Okay. Any questions?
One other quick note too, as we're talking about what's, what's coming in for revenue and what's reflected on the sheet, just a little heads up, the next meeting on the agenda will be the tax budget for the year two, which is our, basically our report that's going to show all we expect in revenue to be coming in for the year for each fund. It also includes on there the beginning balances that we expect for cash. And it's our request to the county to receive, it's our formal request to them to receive the money that will be generated by our levies. So that'll be up on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
That's due January 20th and we also will publish a tax, a tax budget hearing where we allow the public to come in and view that before the board would approve it 10 days in advance.
Awesome.
So that's coming. Any questions about that?
Call the roll please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Next, part of the meeting I always appreciate, donations for November. I'd like to recommend that the board approve the donations and I will read them after, when we start to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. From Abigail Schroder to the Washington Elementary, donation to the principal's fund for technology, $50. From Invisio Design Technologies to the robotics club, $300. And from Morgan Engineering to the robotics club, a donation of $1,000.
Nice, thank you. Thanks so much. Okay, call the roll please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to personnel. If the board is okay, I would like to consent personnel 1 through 6. Very, I'll just briefly read over them, it's a very small amount.
Everybody good? Okay.
Okay, we have a certified retirement. We have two certified retirements this month, two longstanding teachers that will be missed. Classified retirement, we have three classified retirements. We have a, also three longstanding staff members that's going to be missed. We have one classified hire, this is a three-hour cook. We have a, one supplemental for this year, just, and we have one supplemental started for next year, for 2025, '26. And then we have a preferred sub-hire, as a sub, that's all we have for this month.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay, for announcements just upcoming, obviously December 23rd through January 3rd will be, the school will be off and break. January 20th, we do not have school, it's Martin Luther King Day. And January 24th is the end of the second nine weeks, we're pushing- Rather, rather quickly. That's all I have for upcoming events right now. Obviously athletics will be flowing, so please keep an eye on the website or any changes. And then I kind of keep you guys abreast Fridays when I send you an update on what's going on from the athletics and that end of it.
Okay. So, let's see, upcoming events. Okay, for, to elect a president pro tem for the next, for the organizational meeting, is there a motion to elect, to nominate someone?
I nominate Karen Humphries.
Second.
Any other nominations? Call the roll please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
The next Board of Education meeting date will be the organizational meeting.
So can we talk about that? I, I put in my update, I, I asked for, you know, last year, honestly, we go the third Thursday and I'm fine with keeping it that way too, but we have to have an organizational meeting before the 5th, I think it's the 15th of every year. Last year, we decided to do the organizational meeting and then we immediately followed in with our board meetings, we weren't doing two nights. I do not have students of the month in January. We do Januaries and Februaries and February's meeting for that aspect. January 9th does not work for all of our board members based on the update. So I'm looking at a couple of different options. One would be, if you guys are okay, would be the 7th or the 8th, if that works. If you could look at your calendars.
What day of the week?
What's the day again?
I can't look at my calendar.
What's the day again? Tuesday the 7th or Wednesday the 8th?
I'm sure I'm fine either one, truthfully.
Tuesday would be good for me.
So if we go, if you guys could check and see if you go Tuesday, we would still hold like a 5:30 organizational meeting and then a 6:00 PM board meeting?
Wait, what time, 6?
5:30 for organizations, 6:00 PM for board. If that works on a Tuesday. So what that's going to do is, then we'll, we'll basically set the meetings there once you guys, you know, the board decides how they want to move forward, which is fine, however- Tuesday 5:30 for the organization and then, are you guys good with holding the meeting directly after?
Oh, yeah. I think so, that makes sense.
That would be an extremely light agenda, seeming that we leave on break and we come back on the 6th. So we'll just be back and we'll go into that. It won't be, that'll be a light agenda, then we will, February will be a little bit longer agenda, obviously, because there'll be a larger gap between meetings there. If you guys are okay with that. But if you're not, we can stick to the-
And the regular meeting will be 6:00 PM, we'll plan, because the organizational meeting shouldn't take more than a half hour, correct?
Correct.
Should be.
We typically, last year I looked, we did a 5:30 organization and we followed with a 6:00 PM meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so then we're going to do the January meeting right after that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So vote on January 7th.
We might be lacking financial reports, just that, such a short timeframe, but-
Turned around after coming-
And, and the holidays, but just the time of that many, that few days. But that's not the end of the world either. You know, we'll provide any documentation, we can the next meeting.
5:30 for the organization, 6:00 PM. Does that work for the board?
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
The Tuesday, January 7th at 5:30 organizational meeting. And then following that at 6:00 PM, the regular meeting. Okay. So I just, okay, so, I'm recommending the motion. Do we need to make a motion?
No, because we didn't. It's not really set.
Yeah.
I mean, you're setting it, so you just basically recommend the motion to have the organization meeting on January 7th.
January 7th.
At 2, 2025 at 5:30 PM.
Yeah. We just said it, okay. Okay.
It does say recommend the motion on the agenda though, so should we?
I should have left the date off, is what should have happened because it was on there originally, should have just been left open and then we put the date in there.
Okay, well, that's just, we'll just vote. So that's what we're recommending, what we already discussed five times. Who wants to make a motion?
So moved.
Second. Can you call the roll please?
Give me a second, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Is there a motion to which, or, oh, one more thing, sorry?
So you got the last one would be recommend the motion to hold the next regular board meeting on January 7th at 6:00 PM in the DLZ.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Who made the motion there?
Josh.
Josh, and then seconded by?
Jonathan.
Thank you.
Can you call the roll please?